I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 27th at 6 o'clock PM to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Kowski?
Yes, Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Schleter?
Here.
Mr. Trailer?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
I'm present.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Patsch? Thank you. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, one nation, one home, in the name of the Constitution of this strong. Thank you. Item three on the agenda is the Friends of Franklin Public Schools Award presentation. We have Mrs. Schleter and Dr. Patsch.
As many of you know, we are very fortunate here. We have a number of people that have committed volunteer their services to help other kids in a variety of ways throughout the year. And we have volunteer appreciation at the end of the year. We have hundreds of people that have really shown that our elementary is beyond it. And we appreciate them all. Clear in the board meeting, we've been taking nominations for people to nominate people on a monthly basis. And tonight, we have three individuals that we want to recognize. And so first of all, it's all Barb, us, and Lori Feingold up, please, and this guy. Barb nominated Lori A. This is just a brief synopsis of what was written about her. Lori Feingold has been a volunteer at Southwood Glen for many years, as her children have been in school. Lori volunteers in school, in the classroom, and in the IMC. No job too small or too big for her to tackle. Lori's not only involved with the daily school activities for children, but is also very active, is a very active member of the PTA. She also volunteered for and shared numerous after-school functions, along with book fairs, dinners, raffles, and fundraises. Lori has been a wonderful volunteer at Southwood Glen, not only by always being when there would be need her, but also her positive attitude toward the staff and students. I can only hope that she will continue to volunteer at Southwood Glen over the coming years.
Thank you.
Barb, is there anything you'd like to add, Lori?
Um, you know, I honestly, I met Lori three years ago only, and it's like, we bonded for some reason. And I love that. And then, you know, she's there when I meet her in the library. She's there in the office. She's in the classroom. She's after-school doing things. So I cannot say-
Barb wants me to stay until she retires. I'm working on this, you know, like, if you do one more, you would make it. So, middle school people, if she comes up there, you are going to have the perfect person. But I don't want her to go with you, so.
Could I just chime?
It's a thing to go.
Congratulations.
Could I just, oh, sorry. Dr. Patsch, could I interrupt for one second? I just wanted to add that she may very well stick around, Barb, because I remember Lori coming to PTA meetings at Southwood Glen before her son was even in kindergarten. So, yes, she's very dedicated.
Next, we'd like to have Ray Jensen come up, and also Don and Karen Kins. This is what was written about Mr. and Mrs. Kozinski. They are grandparents of two students at Ben Franklin School. Both Don and Karen volunteer so often in our schools, so often in our schools, that many of our students call her Grandma and Grandpa. They are both willing to do anything necessary to help both teachers and students, if any of the students helps them to prepare for science classes and more. For the past four years, they have established themselves as supreme volunteers at Ben Franklin. Ben Franklin. We're so appreciative to have them for all of you for us. Thank you. Anybody want to say anything?
It's just so nice to have a Grandma and Grandpa in the building. It takes the village to really raise our children, and it's just wonderful that everybody refers to them as Grandma and Grandpa, because they know that they're always there. No matter what needs to be done, they are there, welcoming, coming and asking, what more can we do? And it's so nice, also, outside of the community, how much they really have spoken highly of Franklin and our public schools, and how much they appreciate the things that we do for the kids here. So they're a wonderful and fast for us.
Congratulations. Item four on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of community comment. Also, with our administrative rules, we ask that comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. If you'd like to make a community comment, please approach the table and state your name and address. And also, our meetings are videotaped. Would anyone like to make a comment? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to item five. Okay.
My name is Deborah Lequire, and I live at 9100 West Hawthorne Lane.
Oh, can you please, thank you. Can you please do that again at the microphone?
My name is Deborah Lequire, and I live at 9100 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm an educator in Franklin for 14 years at the high school level. And I would like you to please consider, as you approach determination as to applying benefits, especially for those in retirement, the number of people in this district that have been quality, loyal professionals to a brand image, Franklin Public Schools, world-class for more than 20 years, by quite significant numbers, that are under the age of 50, that have had their future forecast, and that just will all sitting there thinking, I'm giving 110 percent to this community, because I believe in it, and I'm trying to deliver a world-class experience for these students. And now you're jeopardizing that by teaching, by asking people to consider themselves to be teachers for a paycheck. That kind of brand name image is going to fall away. People are going to be feeling that they're just coming in, they make a salary, pay their bills, and that sense of loyalty, that sense of commitment to the cause will diminish the ratings. And I think if you look at performing corporations from one of the school districts, I was hired because I had a master's degree. I was hired because I was experienced. I was going to bring something to this, along with a number of my former colleagues, that you're not going to get that. You're going to be a turnstile operation. You're going to get people that are coming in, that are at the low end, they're young, they're less experienced. They'll get their experience, and will say, I'm not going to work 60, 70 hours a week at my kitchen table after the school day end for this, for nothing guaranteed, for a limited pay scale, for no value for education. Educators were educating themselves throughout their career. Now, there's no incentive to do that. I think my getting a master's degree plus 51 additional credits has been beneficial to my students.
Thank you. Can we ask, can we ask that you please sit and use the microphone? Thanks, thanks so much.
Absolutely. They just told me to walk.
My name is Paula Dreyer. I am now a resident of Franklin. I live in Omni Falls. I ask permission to speak.
Yes, thank you.
I've spent the last 22 years of my life proud of the fact that I'm a teacher at Franklin High School. I believe their district offered a competitive salary and benefits package, and I've loved coming to work each and every day, and still do.
Thanks, thanks, Jim. For the first time in 22 years, I am actively pursuing a career outside of education. I used to spend roughly 10 to 15 hours a week outside of my 40-hour work week grading papers, creating assessments, and writing out lesson plans. The last year, five years, I've seen this increase to 60, 70-hour work weeks, and entire summers working on curriculum, learning new technology, and taking courses. It is affecting my health, my family, and my love for this profession. Then, about one month ago, to make matters worse, in addition to everything else that has been added to our plates, we learned that a very financially secure and growing district has decided to take away some of our post-retirement benefits that were promised to us when we began our careers here. 22 years and 43 years old, and I will see less than half of what I was promised when I was hired. I think it is fiscally responsible to take a look at our budgets and see where cuts can be made, but this is not an area that should be addressed. If I had known that this was even a possibility, I could have been saving what would have amounted to roughly $150 more each month 20 years ago. To make up the difference at my age, I would have to set aside more than $1,400 a month. It's impossible. As I stated to some of you in a letter earlier this month, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. I urge all of you to reconsider how these changes might affect your school district. Thank you.
Excuse me. My name's Terry Lequire. I live at 9100 West Hawthorne Lane. My better half already spoke, so I'm the husband of a teacher, and for starters, I can say that I see somebody work intensely hard and being extremely valuable to the school system. In addition to that, I've been in education since 1970, which ages me, but I've seen a lot of administrations and a lot of staffs. I've seen this school district become better in my 20-plus years here with three kids in the system, one still in the system, and it is better than it was, and it was good before. The one thing I've learned through all those years of education, different places, is I've worked in decrepit buildings with most impoverished kids, and if you have a good administration, a good staff, good teachers, they can do great things. And the last thing I would like to see you do is anything that would harm the morale or the well-being of the teachers of this district, which are so good, and that's my support for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patricia Sneed. I live at 3927 East O'Brien in Oak Creek. I just wanted to share with you that when I started as a teacher, I started at parochial school, and I was there for four years. And then I decided to become a substitute teacher. I came to Franklin, I went to Oak Creek, I went to Muskego, and also South Milwaukee. So I certainly had a good variety of, a good idea as to districts that were available. And as I subbed for two years, I really found that Franklin was truly a place that I wanted to be. It really had a lot to offer, their teachers, the students. It also was very caring and compassionate. And I still am very excited and very happy that I made the decision to be a part of Franklin as I was offered many other positions in other districts as well. So I do not regret making that decision to come here. However, I do want to implore of you to please reconsider how, the impact of what it will have on us teachers. I look at the fact that I am under the 17-year mark. I took a year off with my daughter on maternity leave, and for as much as I really am excited that I did that, I almost want to cry because of the fact that if I would have not taken that year off, then I would be at least that 18 years, and I would have at least half of the amount. Of course, I would never take back the time that I had with my daughter, and I am very excited that I had the opportunity to do that. I also know that many of you in this room have children that have been in the district. Some of you we personally know and have worked with, and I am very grateful for that. You know what kind of dedication we have and how much we love what we do. But please allow us to continue loving what we do by not taking this away from us. Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Mike Dix. I live at 9054 South Cordgrass Circle here in Franklin. And I've spent my day looking, after school, of course, spent my day looking for the cost-benefit analysis of what these cuts would actually, how much money would actually save. And I couldn't find it. And so I'm asking, prior to a vote taking place, that you make that public for people to see, but also that you would also, in your cost-benefit analysis, take a look at the unintended consequences that might come to be because of these benefit cuts, such as teachers working an extra seven years rather than retiring, and how that would be an added cost to the district rather than a cost savings. And so from a strict dollars and cents standpoint, you've heard how this is going to affect everybody, including myself, but from a straight dollars and cents standpoint, I'd like to see that cost-benefit analysis, which includes the unintended consequences of increased teacher turnover and a longer, working longer at an increased salary and benefit cost.
Hello. My name is Brandon Johnson. I live at 9356 South 43rd Street in Franklin. My involvement with the Franklin School District started at the age of five, when I was enrolled at Robinwood Elementary in kindergarten. I spent, yes, I know. I spent 13 years in the school district as a student from kindergarten to grade 12. I graduated in 2001. I was lucky enough and fortunate enough to get my teaching position here at Franklin in 2006 after I graduated college. So I spent many years and been involved in a long time with the school district. One thing that I was taught when I was a student in the Franklin School District is that this district, this community, values education. And as a teacher, as a parent, as a parent of a student, of a son of mine who goes to Southwood Glen, I agree with that. Over the last, the past seven years that I've been teaching at Franklin High School, I've seen our ACT scores go up, I've seen our WKCE scores go up, and I've seen great, great teaching going on. I have the utmost respect for all my colleagues and what they do. After college, I was offered a job in the school district of Ripon, and I was ready to move up there and become a teacher up in that district. And in early August, a position opened in Franklin. I thought, how lucky would this be for me to get this job? And I was very fortunate. I told the school district of Ripon, I am going to pay the $500 stipend to remove myself from this position because I have found a better one. I do not want that to ever leave. I want this school district to be the best in this, excuse me, the best in the state. And I think it is right now. And I think one thing that could take away from that is if the retirement package is taken away from the teachers that are here right now. I think other teachers, young teachers that have the potential to be great, are going to go elsewhere. And I want you guys to be aware that that might be a possibility. I love Franklin. I grew up here. I played Little League baseball here. I coach here, I teach here. My wife's a teacher in the district. My son goes to school here. I love it. I don't want anything to happen to him. And I feel like this is one of the major things that could happen to head it in the other direction. And I've always said this to myself in terms of, you know, what I do and what this district does, and it always puts kids first, no matter what, because that's what we are here for as educators. I feel like this would not be putting the best interest in kids first, simply due to the fact that it might deteriorate young, good teachers coming into the district to find other places that do not have this in place. I hope that you guys consider that. I hope you see the face of what Franklin is in terms of being here for many, many years, living in the community, seeing it grow, and being excited for what the future is. Thank you.
My name is Gail DeClark. I live at 4105 West Thorncrest. I've written to all of you, so I don't have to tell you all what's in the letter again, but I did have three offers from three different districts when I took this district's job. And part of what lured me in was the post-retirement benefits. I've come with a tremendous amount of experience, real-world experience that I bring into the classroom. I think Franklin has been smart in hiring teachers that come with real-world experience because we, I think, transform our classrooms. We make the learning more relevant. But those teachers come to you older, and we have less time in the district. And I said, even though I've been here 11 years, and I'm 49 and a half by July, I have given a lot more than 11 years of my life to this place, as many of you can attest, because you've seen me places, you've seen me take my kids to LA, you've seen, you know, we win the Franklin, we win the film festivals in Milwaukee, we show, we do all the extra stuff. And when my kids, one of my kids just came to me and said, can we, you know, do that Franklin Film Festival we were talking about? You know, next year, we'll really, we'll help you. My thought was, I don't know, because I might have to get another job. I might either have to get out of teaching, or I'm going to have to take on a second job and stop all the after-school stuff so I can make this stuff up. I'm 49 and a half. I, it sounds, you know, to the kids, it sounds old. I don't feel like I have enough time to make up what you're taking away when I feel like I've held up my end of the bargain so much. I also don't understand how making me work till 62 at the top end of the pay scale, when you're going to have to pay my retirement, into my retirement, and you're going to have to pay my benefits, how that saves you money? I'm not sure. So I don't understand what the long run is. What I'm really afraid of is that you're going to bleed off all the veteran teachers that have to, that are the ones that support the incoming teachers. We've got teachers dropping like flies because they can't handle the job. We've got teacher kids not going into the profession because it's such a tough job. I ran a network television show, "This Job Is Harder," believe it or not, more rewarding, not monetarily, but much more rewarding in so many ways, but it is much harder, because I'm working with your children. I can't go tell them to go stick it, you know, which you can do in the real world. I can't do that. And so it's very difficult, because you've got to work with them, they're kids. So I just don't, I think people who are in the business world want to put a business model on education. It will never be a business. Would you want me to treat your kids like widgets and treat them all the same and make sure they have all the same parts on them? Your kid is different than your kid. I can't do that. I have to meet their needs, just like a parent. But I have 175 of them right now this semester. So I don't think, I just think you need to understand what you're doing to the morale of teachers. I think you need to understand that unintended consequence is going to bleed off a lot of good experience. They're not going to stay. And the fact that we have no way to move up a pay scale anymore? Kids have asked me, have called me and said, I'm thinking of switching to teaching, what do you think? I really don't know what to say to them, because I don't know what the future is. I don't, it scares the crap out of me. And I said in my letter, do not make me make this decision, because at some point, I'm going to now have to take my well-being and what I need for my family over what I love to do, which is help the kids. So I really hope you reconsider this, because I don't know if you've really thought of all the unintended consequences to this district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Linda Latour. I've been a teacher in the district for over 25 years, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Last, at last board meeting, we had parent-teacher conferences, so the high school teachers were unavailable at that time. I want to thank you, first of all, for your service, because I know this is a very stressful time, not only for the teachers and employees in the district, but also for the board members who have to be King Solomon and so forth. I've had the privilege of working in this district for over 25 years, and I've received so many opportunities and gotten to know so many of you in different situations. And with this new proposal of the benefit plan, it has really had a demoralizing effect that I have never, ever felt before in all my time in Franklin Public Schools. Teachers are referred to as Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, even though they have made extraordinary commitments. And I know many of my fellow colleagues have spoken most eloquently about the jobs that they've done. And I had a whole prepared speech for this, but I have to say, as I look around the room here today, I've worked with you as parents, I've worked with my, with the staff at the high school, and they're so committed to doing what's best for individuals. Here we are, the paradigm for education is shifting so drastically, and everyone's working so, so hard to do what's best professionally. But we also have to take care of ourselves personally, to take care of our families as well. And I hope you will take that into consideration when you make your final decision. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we thank you for your comments, and we will now move on to item five, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Trailer. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schleter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. And item six is the consent agenda. Is there any board member who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve items A through D on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Trailer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Item seven, school board announcements. Does anyone have an announcement?
I'd just like to say that I attended the Fine Arts Fiesta last week, and it was a huge success. It was amazing to see all the fine pieces of artwork that our students were able to create, and just the whole feeling within the building was fantastic. There was such warmth and excitement from the students and the parents and the teachers. So I'd like to say that I just really appreciated everything that was done for that event, and I was glad to be part of it.
Thank you. I also attended that Fine Arts Fiesta, and I was taught how to make a clay nation. Took about half an hour, and it was really interesting. I enjoyed that and was able to see the administrators do some painting and the artwork by the staff, which was very nice, and the great artwork by the students, of course. I also attended the Forest Park Student of the Month breakfast. It's always nice to attend those breakfasts. Any other announcements?
I was able to attend the Midwest Regional Robotics Competition on Saturday. Mr. Dix and his team did a fabulous job. I really encourage anyone in the room, whoever gets the opportunity to go, to do it, because it's, it's way more exciting and way more fun than you would ever think it would be in a million years.
Did you get any pictures?
I did get some pictures, yes.
Anything else? Thank you. Item eight, school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, April 10th, 2013, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. A regular board meeting Wednesday, April 24th, 2013, here at 6 o'clock PM. Item nine, reports and presentations. Superintendent's report, Dr. Patsch.
Yes, under the architect's report, on April 10th, the designers, architects, and construction people will be making a comprehensive presentation of the board. We're really getting, finalizing our efforts and so on. That'll be going forward to the planning commission early next month. It's a pretty exciting time. We're looking at color schemes, carpet, those kinds of things right now. But more importantly, you'll have an opportunity to see how the building is going to develop and unfold, and what it'll look like, and those kinds of things. And it's, it's been a lot of fun to do it, it's been a lot of work, and there's been a lot of involvement by people. So on April 10th, you'll be able to see that. To give you an update on the security in our buildings, as a result of some of the things that occurred throughout the nation, at Ben Franklin, Countrydale, and Robinwood, we're all set there. We have a buzz-in method where you can get into the office, but you can't get out unless you're buzzed out of the office. That same thing will occur at Southwood Glen and Pleasant View. We have some materials that had to be ordered, and some electronics that had to be dealt with. And then Forest Park has probably the most significant renovation that had to take place, and that'll be done over spring break as well. So the high school, we're pleased with the way that operates currently, and all of our elementaries and middle school, by the end of spring break, will be up and operational. It takes time, because we had to order materials, there was planning and so on that had to take place, and of course, we were not the only school. And of course, we were not the only school on the block that was looking to make some significant upgrades in a hurry, so, but we feel good. The ones that are up and fully operational are in good shape, and the others will be done at the end of spring break.
Any questions? Thank you. And item 9B, the Human Resources Business Services Report, the discussion of the report on reduction of liability associated with other post-employment benefits. Mr. Millsar?
We sent out the latest answers to your questions that you had going forward, and I think the main thing for tonight was the board to discuss among yourselves how you, how you view the proposal, any other changes you'd wanna look at making, possibly some other cost things you'd wanna do. And it doesn't have to be real specific, even just your thoughts. Would you like to cost out other options? Would you like to look at what it would look like if, say, Tier Two were more gradual than it is in the, in the proposal? Whatever it is that you're thinking about, I don't think the board's really had a good opportunity to talk about it amongst yourselves as to where you wanna go with that. We're not, certainly not done with it. We don't have to be done with it. We can, we can continue to work on it and think about it, but we need direction from you on, you know, which way do we wanna go?
Thank you.
Just a general question I'd have, Jim. How would you address some of the things that have come up about, you know, how do you, how do we see the cost savings? What are the cost savings? Seems to be a point of ambiguity a little bit with, with some of the staff. Do they have, do they get some of the documents that we have? Were those posted about the savings the district would have? And why this, why we're even talking about this? I mean, this isn't something that, that the board came up with, this is something the administration came up with, and I don't think it was so we could pack a room and hang out with everybody. So it was for a reason, and I think it's getting that across as to why we're even talking about this.
I think we've, we've talked about it in general, and we've let groups know that we are going to look at it. As far as going into specifics, we need to get that direction from the board on, about where the proposal's going to land. There's been, we've talked about when to go to staff. Well, we need to go to staff, and we've got some idea of, about where it's gonna land to help with working on that at that point. We haven't gone out in an all-out educational effort as to exactly why it is and what this proposal saves and that kind of thing, because we may not end up with this proposal. So we haven't gone deeply into that, no?
Oh yeah, but there was, sorry, but there was a number that was, that was like $30 million or something, or what was it?
$50 million over 30 years.
$50 million over 30 years. So it's, that was part of, one of the driving forces. And the fact that the path we're on is not sustainable, is that not what you came up with, the consultants and the actuarial studies?
Right. Each actuarial study that we do projects what it would cost the district over a period of time, and it's, it's millions of dollars. And it's more than we can afford in our budget. Right now, we're on a pay-as-you-go basis, but as, as we go through time, our budget doesn't expand fast enough to pay for the increases in health insurance. So as the actuaries project that over time, we wouldn't be able to meet that obligation. So we've had, several of those studies were due for another one, and the idea was to take a look at this, try and make a change for the future, try and make it gradual and sustainable in the end, so that the district can afford that benefit and didn't need to make changes, or changes continually to that benefit over time.
Because that was the biggest thing that hit me with that last meeting, was that the timing of the announcement and what, when they found out about it and what they found out about it, and that there wasn't a whole lot of, well, there wasn't any input from their side. But I know that their, their plans aren't being, though, as we have discussions.
Well, when the board directed us over a year and a half ago to take a look at our post-employment benefits, the, the first thing we did is we had to have an actuarial study done to see exactly where we were at. And that's what was done, and those actuaries just simply presented a proposal. It doesn't mean that it was the proposal by any means, but when we were instructed to find ways to take a look at our budget reductions and so on and so forth over the long term, the only way we could do that is with an actuarial study. Otherwise, we're just guessing, and because we don't know where any of those rates or anything will come in that way. So the proposal that the actuarial people did was, was the tiered system that you saw, but it was just representative of what would happen if we currently stayed on the path that we were on, so that we can plan for the future. And that's, that's what we brought before the board.
Well, we can't go anywhere without giving you directions, so we have this three-tiered plan proposed. So we need to, I think, first voice our opinion on whether we all are in favor of a three-tiered plan, whether it's this proposed plan or whether we wanna make changes to it. So first question is, is there any board member opposed to a three-tiered plan?
Um, I guess, this is only the third conversation I've been privy to on these benefits. I was not at the very first meeting on this. But one thing that I notice is that when we come up with about 45 questions regarding this plan, that tells me that we really aren't sure what we're doing yet, that we need more time, that we're not ready to make a decision, that we need to do more research. And I personally would propose forming an ad hoc committee, appointed by you, Mrs. Evans, to work with the administration and to come up with two or three or four plans that we can put next to the tiered plan and compare our options. I feel like we need to go out to our staff, we need to get input from them, we need to see where we're going. We can't, in my opinion, ram this down their throats in two months and say, here, rearrange your household and do something better, because now this is what we've decided. So I think... I, I'd like to make a motion that we put together an ad hoc committee to work with the administration and charge them with coming up with two or three more options to this three-tiered plan.
A second, then.
Well, as far as, is there any discussion? I don't think we needed a motion to make an ad hoc committee, but I wouldn't be opposed to having an ad hoc committee, but when you, when you say three or four different plans, exactly what do you mean by three or four different plans?
Three or four different options to show us what we have in place. We've only seen one plan. We've basically cut off our young teachers at the ankles, we've diminished our middle-tier teachers with the benefits that they're getting, we've knocked out some of our top-tier teachers because they're two months shy of a birthday. I think we need to come up with some, another option. We were told...
You mean another, another option in a three-tiered?
No, something other than a three-tiered plan. I, I don't know what that is. That isn't my field of expertise, but I...
But there's only HSA, HRA, TSA. I mean, you, there's only, there are only so many options, and...
I'd like to see those options, then. Then those options that you've listed, I'd like to see some of those options. I think we need more options.
And I'm just making discussion here. We, we did see that for HRA and HSA, that there are disadvantages and advantages, just like the TSA.
Yeah, I'm referring to a document on January 9th, where Questions and Answers, where it discussed what the definition of an HRA is, the advantages and disadvantages, the HSA and the TSA. And Jim, you were leaning toward the TSA, because it's got greater flexibility, it's not tied to health insurance. Could you expound on that just a little bit?
Right. That's why that was chosen, because all of the benefits are different for the different employee groups, and we need to be able to deal with that. The TSA allowed us to do that. We're not quite sure what's going to happen with health insurance in the future. So if we'd put money into a health insurance-only vehicle, it could be that that wouldn't be able to be used at some point. So we went with the TSA as the vehicle, so that teachers could use it for, or all employees really could use it for, the insurance. They could use it for something else completely if they didn't need it at that point. It gave more flexibility, and it allowed us to work with each of our employee groups separate. I don't think we, you know, as far as coming up with other plans, we certainly don't have a problem coming up with other plans. We just look for a little, a little direction on what you would like those plans to do. If you would like the plans to be more gradual, or save less money in some way, but be more gradual, then that's a direction that we can go, if that's what the other plans, you would want them to look like.
Yeah, I, I would have a problem looking at some other plans, but I think the nature of what we have here with employees along the spectrum of employment is it's gonna end up with some kind of tiered system. You're gonna have people that fall into one group, people that fall into another, and that isn't to classify or categorize or label or anything like that, but that's just gonna be the reality of it. And, and the plan wouldn't necessarily be either an HSA, a TSA, or a, an HRA. I think the TSA might be the most wise vehicle to use, but one of the things I took away from last meeting was maybe putting a greater emphasis on FYE, on years of service. And so, you know, look at somebody who has been in the district for maybe an 18-year deal, that isn't to the right age bracket, that's a long time to be employed by somebody, and then to not be able to get certain level of benefits, you know, that was one of the things that struck me. So I think it would make sense to take, to relook at what we're, what we're looking at doing, but, I mean, to charge an ad hoc committee to come up with three or four different plans might, might be a little much. I think getting collaborative input to come up with some other alternatives, I think that'd be fine. I also think that whatever we look at doing, there's gonna have, there would have to be some trade-offs, because, because we, we need to make this decision. The reason why we're here is because what we're, the path we're on isn't sustainable. And so there is gonna have to be some trade-offs. I know one of the things that I was looking at, if Tier One were to be the 50-years-old and the 15 FY, you know, years of service, maybe Tier Two could be that 15 years of service, but they haven't hit the 50-year, 50-year-old age mark yet. And instead of going with the health insurance component, there could be, like we had talked about, a payout for the, a TSA conversion, but maybe that payout isn't 50%. Maybe that payout's 100% or 90% or whatever it is. But one of the things that I think we, we need to look at is converting off of the unknown, which is how much health insurance is gonna cost in the future, and getting more into something, a vehicle that we can fund based on years of service, maybe based on a dollar amount or something, that wouldn't be tied to premiums, because premiums are such an unknown right now. Even these next two years are gonna be a lot of turmoil with these premiums. I personally had a, we just had a reassessment and a renewal, and it was scary what the premiums did. And it's usually in the seven, eight range, and it was closer to 20. So I don't know what our own insurance is gonna look like for this district in June or whenever we're looking at that, but...
Well, they projected it'd go up 30%.
Hope not.
I don't think we've heard any number...
Don't forget the...
I don't know. I just, my point is, that is, I believe, why you were looking for a vehicle that steers away from tying into health insurance plan, and something that's more funded, that will give you more opportunity to use that money how you wish.
Did you guys look at some kind of a sliding scale, where, you know, maybe you add up age and years of service, or some combination of those two? And then it was, you know, more of a continuum instead of the tiers? Because no matter where you draw the line, somebody's always gonna be, you know, six months away from the next...
Now, if we draw the line as new coming employees, the line is when you're hired in as a new employee, you already know what you're getting. Opposed to getting the... Just that is, compared to some of those other ones, you can go from there. By now, we only have one number to work on.
And how do you plan for somebody who comes in at 23 that's got 30 years in the district?
No, a new hire would come in...
I'm talking to somebody that was hired this year. It'd be somebody that was hired this year who would be grandfathered into the benefits package as it is now. How can we pay for that 30 years from now? That, that's the, that's where, you know, that's where we are right now. That's when they looked at the studies from the actuary, those are the numbers that blew up. Just completely blew up off the charts. That's, you know, I think that's why, why we're talking. I think locking that in, where we are now, locking that in, and then if everyone get what they have, it was gonna have to be some kind of modified version of that.
I understand that we may, we have to do something. I understand that part. I'm not that naive. However, I'd like to see other options to the one option that we've been given. I'd like to see the other options. I don't know, I don't, doesn't matter to me if you call it a tiered plan or a gradual plan, whatever it is, I'd like to see other options. And I don't think that I'm being unreasonable to ask for two or three different options that we can use. Last week, when I believe Mrs. Fossbender spoke to us, she addressed O Creek or Mesquitos' plan. I'd like to see, you know, look at their plan a little bit more, see what they're doing. I'd like to look at some other plans that are taking place, but I don't think that we can make a good decision just by looking at one plan.
Is it comparable, because if somebody's gonna leave our package to another package, is our package comparable to everybody else's package?
Right. What are they leaving us for?
And I agree. I think there, there needs to be other input. There's, there's no doubt. Fellas, that's something that would be done with representatives from administration, staff, a board member...
Administration, board members.
We don't need to commission another study, you're not proposing that.
No, no.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
I guess, what timeline are you looking at?
I don't, I don't know how something like that, how long that would take. I don't know. I don't have a definite timeline in my head. I don't know how long something like that takes. How long did it take you to come up with a tiered plan?
Several months, but a lot of the groundwork's been done. I would think if we were gonna come up with several plans that all look different, you'd be looking at a couple of months anyway.
Are you looking for this to be completed, loaded by July?
Um, right, it's up to the board.
Well, yeah, but I mean, when, when you came with this, was there a timeline, an end of the tunnel?
The original goal was to have it in place so that employees would know, so we were looking at the July timeframe. But if it isn't done by then, there are other deadlines that can be altered, and it's not really retirement time at that point. But we'd want people to be able to plan based on whatever it turns out to be.
I think if most of what we come up with will be somewhat either a formula of or based on years of service, I think would, I think it would make sense to try and get something in place before the end of this year, so people know, so next year starts with a clear idea of what, what they're looking at.
Are we, are we talking, though, just variations of the current proposal, which essentially does modify the tiers? Or are we talking about everything is up for discussion?
In my mind, everything's up for discussion.
And what kind of criteria are you looking for in terms of how we're gonna ultimately
Honestly, right now, I don't have an answer to that question. All I know is the conversations I've listened to, the testimonials, testimonials that I've listened to, the, like I said, I think we had, I think we sent 45 questions to Mr. Millsar, regarding this information. I'm looking for more information. I'd like a, a, a plan to compare to. I, I can't believe that we have the best plan in place right now. I just, I can't, I, I don't see it. And I'm not sure that this board sees it as the best plan. I think if we thought it was the best plan, we wouldn't have 45 questions regarding it. If it was the best plan, I don't think we'd have a room filled with people that are very unhappy. And I, I think they deserve to give us input. I think we deserve at least, at least, if Mr. Millsar says that we can trade off some deadlines for different things, then, then there is the time to make that decision. There is that time to do that research and to make some wise decisions. This, we've worked too hard in this district to become a world-class district. We, we've employed the best of the best people that we can, and I hate to see this district fall apart, because now we've decided that, well, maybe we can do something on the cheap. And it's just like, I've heard, I think, someone in the audience say, and I know I've heard other people say, just because you can cut something, doesn't mean you have to. You have to be fair and equitable about what you're doing. And I just feel like asking for another plan to look at what we're doing is not being unreasonable. Asking for some input from our staff members is not unreasonable.
I think it's going to be really hard for us to make a good decision without knowing what's the most important to our staff members.
Exactly, exactly.
Is it retirement age? Is it health, access to healthcare? Is it sick day payout? You know, we don't know which of those things is most important to people, and we are going to have to make some cuts. That's a harsh reality, but we want to do it in the least painful way that we can, or I do.
And I agree with you.
I would hope that, you know, the plan that Jim had time to look at, and when he sat down with the actuarial consultant, that he didn't put something together that was not thoughtful or uncheap. I don't, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not, I am not suggesting that in any way, shape, or form. I would never suggest that of any employee of this district doing something on the cheap or whatever. I would not say that.
Well, and they didn't care. I mean, I think we all care, and I don't think we're trying to label anybody. The reality of it is no one likes to have a conversation like this. And so I think we were trying to find the best way to, to do it. I agree that this probably is not the best way to do it, but I think it's the framework of a discussion to figure out, like Mrs. Klein said, what's, what are the things that are most important for people to look at?
And that, that's what I'm asking for.
So, I just took a little exception to the, to that last comment.
I think we've heard a lot about how you all say you're dedicated, and you care about the children, and we know that. We all know that. We understand that. That's not what this is about. One thing this is about is, that's not what this is about. We have to keep some dollars in the classroom, and it isn't, isn't just about now. It is about down the road. We know how valuable you are, and you have to look around. All districts have to do this. They all have to do it. They have either done it, or are doing it now, or are going to do it in the future. It is not just our district, so...
I'd just like a point of clarification, please. Adminis-, Dr. Pats, did you direct the administrators to go back and open this discussion, or start the discussion on this, or start the research on this? Was that under your direction?
No, the board had asked us, the board had asked us when we did the handbook, when benefit, when the issue of benefits came into part of that discussion, we were directed to go back and find a way to look at reducing costs for the future in terms of our benefit packages.
Okay. So that didn't come from you?
No.
You mean, as far as the plan? No.
No, the direction to begin that study.
No, the board, we had more than one conversation with that when we were doing the handbook, because we were looking at everything from salaries to benefits to everything that was in the handbook.
I, I didn't recall that.
Six days was another thing that was talked about.
Thank you.
Well, you know, administration did bring the plan to us, and what were your plans as far as working with staff, though? I mean, we didn't say, do this outside of input with staff.
No.
So what was...
We, we, the first thing was, we had to bring something before the board to see if this, if we were on the right page, to see if we were doing what you wanted us to do, where we were going to go. That's why it's called a proposal. The reason we didn't go to staff initially, and we had every intention of doing it, and still did, was because when you talk about a plan like a tiered plan, everybody in this room is at a different point on that plan for the most part. You've got your tier one, tier two, tier three, and every one of those has a cutoff line. Well, when we go out and meet with staff and we hear people that might be in tier one giving us input, it's going to be dramatically different than what tier two is going to be, which is going to be dramatically different than what tier three is going to be. We needed to have an idea, what are we going to put before them? Is it going to be a tiered plan? That's why, exactly why this discussion is taking place. If you want another alternative to the tiered plan, then that's what we have to fit into the needs of all these people. It can't be just, the tiered plan is all you're going to get, so how do you feel about it? And we had no answers in terms of how the board felt at that time, and that was the purpose of bringing this onto the agenda, to get input from you to give us direction, to go back to them and create that conversation.
Thank you.
Jim, do you think you could have some conversations with other district business managers and just see how they may have gone through this? Some already have, and what they ended up using. We could get some actual feedback from some of our crowning, surrounding districts. I know Mrs. Lukowski, you said Greendale already implemented something?
Correct.
But that's for...
That was some time ago, right? That's been in place for, I believe, a couple of years.
So, you know, might as well, that's how I think you can make the best decision in anything, is get a bunch of feedback from what everybody else already did, and don't do the stuff they didn't like what they did, and maybe take a look at doing some of the things they did like about how it turned out, and we can get the best of both worlds. So we can have the benefit of other people doing this before us, getting some feedback that way. That might help. Because I'm just trying to figure out conceptually what another plan would look like outside of the framework of this type of plan, some type of tiered system. Like you said, years of service and ages of points, whatever, but you're, that's still going to put people in categories.
And ultimately, Jim, we have to save millions of dollars to make this sustainable going forward. Millions of dollars are what needs to be saved.
Right.
We already indicated this plan saves $50 million. So somebody is not going to get $50 million of benefits out there. So we're really talking about how we're going to divide this savings among our employees? Is that really what the decision comes down to then? Because that, that's a given number. We can't really afford to save less, can we?
I don't think it's a given number. It's the number associated with the proposed plan. From the, since I'm getting from the board from the discussion so far, is that we would like to relax the plan so that it, it takes longer, doesn't cook twice as fast or quite as far. So that would save less money. I mean, all of those options would save less money, but it sounds like those are the optional plans that we would be developing.
To Tim's question, there, there are numerous districts that are doing different things, and a tiered plan is not the only plan that people are doing out there. Monomie Falls is doing so. I just started to read before I came in tonight. I don't know what a, you know, the whole plan is. I don't think O'Kreek's is a tiered plan in any sense in the way. They just had a meeting on that Monday night, too. So there are a variety of plans out there, and I think it comes down to, you know, looking at the savings and what, what, you know, how far do we want to go? How far do we need to go?
I think that second question is a good one. How far do we need to go? I mean, I mean, we have the option of doing, of saving zero, which is to change nothing, but I don't think that we can do that. So we're somewhere between zero and something, so we got to try and find the best way and the most equitable way and the most palatable way to get to where we need to get to. But I, I'd love to see what some of the other districts are looking at. I think that's what the board is looking at. Maybe that, that'd be a good idea, to get some other ideas.
There was information added into question number nine, added additional information from districts. Most of them in the area are pretty much in the same spot we are. They're going through the process right now, so they don't have a final output either. But there are different ways of looking at it, formulas, tiers, things happening at the end. There's, there's a few different things to look at, but, you know, a lot of them do have cutoffs in some sense along the way.
And I guess, even in looking around at what other districts have done, this, nothing appeals to me as converging as the way to go. It's going to be a difficult decision. We can't take that away from the fact that this is going to be a difficult decision. Someone's benefits are changing. Our, as an adminis-, how can we, I appreciate that we need to get some input from our staff, but are, what other ways can we do that? I know committees, you're proposing a committee, but are there other ways that we can open that up and get some input that would facilitate this? It's not, like I said, I think we're going to be deferring a difficult decision. I think we need to, we've already got people excited. I think we should find a way to kind of keep this moving and get some closure. But what other ways can you, that you would prefer to provide that avenue where we can listen to our staff, and as Melissa said, determine what their priorities might be?
I don't know. There is another way. We just have to sit down and listen to them. Just simply have that.
And would that dialogue look like blank piece of paper? What do you want? Or would there be, this is our proposal, how would you tweak it?
Well, I think you always start off by asking people what are their, their number-one priorities, and I think you hear that. But the other part of it is, if we do that right now, we are simply going out and saying, how do you feel about the tiered system? That's the only thing we have to go on right now. So what we need to do is be able to cultivate, if it's another option, or two, or three, or at least make them aware that here are some things other people are doing. How do you feel about that? We can't put them in a position where they're just responding to the tiered plan because there's nothing else to respond to. And all they're going to tell us, the people on the tier one are going to say X, tier two is going to say Y, and the other ones are going to say Z. And that's, that's why we didn't go to them in the first place, because we didn't have the direction or the necessary, I guess, criteria to be able to say, all of you in tier one, here's, here's the only thing you can respond to, without them saying, well, what, what other options are there? And that's what we wanted to find out is whether, you know, do you want us to do that? Do you want us to explore other options? Because the tiered system is not the only system, as was already said. And if we find one or two or three options, then it's more valuable for us to go to staff and say, here's another option. How do you feel about this? And staff might say, well, I like that one better than this one. And that gives us the dialogue and the input that we need to have.
That's what I was proposing. You said it eloquently than I do, but that's what I'm proposing.
I, I don't know what your question was really, I, maybe I didn't understand. The only way to, to get input from staff is talk to them, you know. We even thought about doing a survey at one time. We would have to write a 300-question survey to address everything, and everybody would be at a different level, and we would not get what I would think would be valuable information would be all over the board. And we got to find a way to condense whatever the information we get is, so that you have, you know, some solid input on particular plans or options, or whatever it might be.
But whatever we do has to include years and years served and age, and it has to be in there. We put it in there.
I would say probably all districts have that as a baseline cri- criteria.
Yeah, so they're coming in right out of college and then still be in their 40s and then get it yanked out.
Does the, would the board think it'd be helpful if we found out, if Jim were able to contact the business managers in other districts, what surrounding districts are doing? Can we, we can kind of come to a consensus on that at least?
I think that's what the committee will do. They'll, committee will put together, like any other committee, will put together a new proposal with all the back, back information for us when they make the presentation. It'd bring out, here's what everybody else has, here's their three options, now this is what we propose. Again, that's what a committee would do.
Again, exactly what I'm proposing, but said even better.
Well, that was one of the questions that you had in your email to the board about, I mean, what kind of feedback did you get on that?
It was all over, Tim. You know, was, there were some people that just wanted to, you know, most I think were, I shouldn't say most. I would say the majority of people said, we got to have more information, and we have to explore something else. There were those that said, you know, we, we need to just fine-tune it. There, you know, one of the questions was, are you interested in something that's more gradual? You know, there wasn't anything that just jumped out that everybody landed on the same base with. It was, it was all over.
Well, I, I would like to think that the board is at the point where we're not trying to do something just because we can. I, I don't think any one of us up here are there. So I think we need to keep that in consideration when we do make a decision. Take the input from, from finances to see what, what is it that we need to do, and when do we need to do it. I'd like to make part of that decision.
I guess, I wouldn't be opposed to the committee, but I would like to at least add some parameter to their direction, and that, and I would suggest that that parameter be that it would save the same amount of money as the current proposal. They're free to, to do, and then we can move off or up or down based on that, that number.
Are you basing $50 million on?
We have a plan for us from administration that is suggested.
Right, but why, why are you on that $50 million? Where's, what are you justifying that $50 million for? Is it an upstoppable number, or is it just a, why are you picking the number?
I, it's the number that administration provided.
Right, that's the number that went with this plan.
That's right. That would help us, it would give us a benchmark, I guess. At least it's a, it's a measurement of, you know, where we are and where we're going.
If you had a different plan, it's going to have a different number.
I understand that, and that's what I'm, I would, it would at least keep something constant in the, in the conversation.
I'm not sure that we'd be able to see much difference than if that's our parameter. If you can't go beyond that $50 million or under that $50 million, I don't know how much difference we're going to see. I don't, I, I would hate to lock the committee into that parameter. I would like to just see our other options. And even if we had four other options, and one option saved us absolutely nothing, at least we had that option to look at. And we have the $50 million savings option to look at, and there's got to be something in between. And that's what I'm asking for, is I want to see the in-between.
Yeah, because you know, we started everybody out with zero that starts right now, that still saves money.
Yeah, what would that save? I mean, that's just an option.
There's always a savings. Are we, is it $50 million where we can't afford anymore? We don't know that number. When does our, when does our liability run out of our, am I saying that right? When does our, our debt, our future debt run out of our budget? How far out?
For debt service?
No, for the imaginary number we're using out in the future that we can't afford anymore. What is that?
It runs out 30 years.
And how much is that? Is that the $50 million?
The $50 million was the savings. I believe the total might have been 82 million in cost.
I think you're correct. And our annual required contribution was $4 million if no changes were made. Is that correct?
I think so.
Yes.
I think so. It was, if not that, very close to that.
And our current budgeted number was about...
About one and a half million.
One and a half million? So that is the gap we're looking at.
Right, and then we throw in the new health insurance that hits next year, which, you know, that's going to do to the health insurance.
Which compounds the problem even more. That's the whole point. If now we have a huge increase on the health insurance, now how on earth are we supposed to fund future retirement obligations when we're not even going to be able to pay our health insurance obligation with numbers keep going up like that, which is why we're trying to get in front of it.
Well, we don't know next year if there's going to be health insurance. If all the private insurance drop out, then we don't know what that number is when it all goes federal.
It's going to be kind of hard to, what if that? You can't really what if that?
We should have a ton of money then, if we don't have any future.
Is that one impacted the rest of the districts? That same, would it?
Next year it is. So as they, as they click through, we're probably going to have one more insurance contract come through, and it's going to be full, full of force.
What would you think?
Which is why you wanted to go to a TSA.
It's one of the reasons, right.
I, I have a motion on the floor.
Right. Can you, can you restate your motion?
Um, my motion would be to form an ad hoc committee with administration to look at three to four other options for our post-employment employee benefits, and report, and have the committee report back to the board. And that's without the parameter of the $50 million.
I don't have an issue with forming an ad hoc, ad hoc committee, but I would not be, I would not approve the motion with three or four. I think we all know we want to look at other options, but to say now we have one or two...
All right, I will amend my motion to three options. We have one...
Additional or three total?
Three total. We have one sitting there, three total.
What if we get feedback from surrounding districts, and we take the best parts of all those districts, and we come up with another proposal?
I, I, I really don't see the harm in coming up with other options.
I don't either. I just, I don't know how hard this is going to be. I suppose the third option could be what we have right now.
Exact, that's what I said.
So all we need to come up with is one more, then?
No, I would like two other options. Two, at least two options.
Basically, it'd be a high, medium, and low package, basically.
Well, the low is what we have now. The low is nothing. I guess the high would be the proposal, and we're looking for something in between, which would be a hybrid of what our surrounding districts do.
Mr. Millsar said most of the, the legwork is already finished, and it shouldn't be that difficult to do. And I think, you know, when a decision this big is going to be made, I think we need to have as much input and as much knowledge as we can. And I don't really see the harm in having two, three, or, as I stated earlier, four options.
There's no harm. I'm just, I don't know how difficult it's going to be, that's all. That's fine.
Can you restate your final offer?
And can we have somewhat of a timeline? I guess I'm concerned that, you know, we're not going to get to it. I mean, that's all I would have asked.
Okay. I would make the motion that we form an ad hoc committee to examine... I would make the motion that we form an ad hoc committee to examine three additional options to study the post-employment benefits within the next six months from today.
Just to clarify, because there's been a lot, it's three in addition to the existing?
Yes, yes, yes.
So when we're done, there's four of them.
Yes.
Give a second to that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Membership of the ad hoc committee? Is there any, do we have rules on that?
I will sign that committee after we let's get this approved.
Oh, you will sign, okay. All right, sure.
Or whatever, but I, I'm just reading that, trying to read that again. Six months. Is there any further discussion? May I roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Larson?
Hi.
Mrs. Sleder?
Hi.
Mr. Trailer?
Hi.
Mrs. Evans?
No.
Mr. Nielsen?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Hi.
I will say yes.
The motion carries.
Anyone who might be, any board member who might be interested in being on that committee, please, if you have time, email me tonight, otherwise tomorrow.
Are we still on B?
We are still on B.
I was going to, the reason I would have known is because I was going to create another motion that would put a tighter timeline on it. And you originally said you wanted three total plans, and the motion was for three additional plans. So now the committee comes back with four plans, and we don't have any kind of, any kind of finite timeline on this to try and get this hammered out now, whether it's, you know, a good plan in the best interest for everybody now. So come July 1, starting a new year, we can come out with a clean slate, and everyone knows that they're going to have new hirees, new employees, new hires, and new employees. That was why I would have gone for a plan, because I thought a six-month window was, was too long.
That's the maximum, though. There's no real.
Well, that's true. It doesn't have to take such a long.
But I, I think it's in our best interest to do this with our administration.
I wanted to explain why I would have known, because the motion changed a little.
I think three months would be realistic. It would compress it somewhat.
I think that, I think that'd be fair for everybody here to know what's going on.
Why don't we just take the approach that the direction the board has just given would be, is a maximum of six months, but the committee will work as strong as possible to create that in a lesser timeframe, whether that's two months, three months, five months. Nothing set in stone.
I think that'd be great.
Because I think that the intent was within six months.
The intent was to put a timeline on it, because that was Mrs. Winkowski's request. Thank you. Request.
That's also what I voted on, is six months.
Because I do think we need to look at other plans, so I'm absolutely agree with that.
Is there any other discussion on item B? Hearing none, we will move to item C, Instructional Services Report. Dr. Duzer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, the report, this evening, I'm, I'm just going to be introducing people who'll do this report for you, so.
Could you put your microphone up a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to just wait a minute for a moment.
Can you hear me?
I just want to keep track of that.
So as you know, Mr. Zellmer and myself are responsible for about 16 curriculum areas, and many of the teachers leaving do a lot of great work in all those curriculum areas. But we also have programs within the curriculum areas that support that personalized approach to the students. And our district motto is inspiring personal success. And so it takes a large team of people to ensure we meet the needs of the students that come to us with all different kinds of needs and talents and gifts. So this evening, before the board, we have the Gifted and Talented Report and the English Language Learner Report. And I first would like to start out by introducing who's going to share this information with you. We have Jill Arniberg, who is the one full-time employee for the Gifted and Talented Program, and Jill's going to introduce some of the support staff that she works with that were willing to come tonight. You're just going to introduce, I can do a yellow, and then we'll start reporting.
Oh, sorry. Well, behind me I have Patty Jenna, who is a GT facilitator for Conseydale, and then I have Jill Rogers behind me, who is at Rutherford. And there are also six other GT facilitators that work with me as well, who are not here.
And they're full-time teachers who do this in addition to their work. Their advisory provide input from the staff, so they represent each of the buildings. So Jill has voice around all of the buildings that she works with. And then we have coordinators that are also full-time facilitators for ESL, and that is Denise Ryan and Bridget Cassidy. And they brought not only staff with them, but some parents and students. So they'll introduce all of their guests, and then we'll begin the report.
That is Lucy Bain, and she is our Mong Interpreter. Lucy has worked for Franklin Public Schools for over 20 years. She is invaluable to the district. She also had several of her children go through Franklin.
Can you grab a microphone?
She also had several of her children attend Franklin schools as well throughout the years. And we have our new hire, Melissa Beethoven, and she brought her newcomer, Hae Yoon, and Hae Yoon is from Korea. And Hae Yoon's family was nice enough to come and attend our board meeting as well. I wonder how much they understood. So that is our job, to make language comprehensible, so that'll be interesting. So welcome. Thank you.
And Bridget is right back there, so we're going to start out right now with Jill, and she's going to, we're not repeating the report. She's going to take a few minutes to kind of bring the report to life for you and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, just make sure that you can hear me here. Thank you for having me. I wanted to start off by sharing the district's gifted programming mission statement. And you'll notice, as you're reading through that, the word "programming" is in blue and it's in italics, because what we have in Franklin is programming and not a gifted program, which typically is a more antiquated model, where in the past has looked more pull-out, where kids were serviced maybe 30 minutes a day by either a coordinator or some sort of GT, I'll say facilitator, and worked with them maybe 30 minutes, you know, once a week, and they worked on certain projects or things like that. So what we have now is programming within the regular classroom to meet the students' needs, which is a more, more progressive approach to GT programming, which is nice to have in Franklin. This slide kind of shows you the breakdown of the population. I've looked at every building and took the, the amount of students and then our total identified students. We identify in third grade, so this is reflective of our students in grades four through six, with a small exception for a couple of K2 students that we identify on a case-by-case basis. We have a rather large population. As you can see, we have 16% of our district identified. And because we have so many, you know, great students coming to our district, a lot of background knowledge and a lot of, you know, great experiences, the parents send us with great products, we have in the past identified a lot of talented students, but maybe not necessarily a truly gifted child. So on the next slide, I'll just kind of address, you know.
Just, can I ask you a question, Sally?
Yep.
Oh, sure. So, and that would kind of explain why that 25% is higher in the upper grades? Is that what you're kind of?
Well, because it's all, it's multiple schools coming together, so.
But as a percent, it should be the same unless there's, because they only identify at third grades.
Yeah, but the district census numbers, that's the entire school, not just grades four through six. So the younger kids wouldn't be identified, so that's why those percentages are lower.
Right. Linda, by the time everyone gets to middle school, everybody's had a chance to be identified by our criteria, but as she's pointing out, the K through three students aren't in those percentage numbers earlier.
Okay. Just try and understand how that mathematically reads.
Okay, so in the past, as I kind of was stating, we had a little bit of over-identification happening because we have so many bright, talented students. That's where our numbers came from that we saw on the, on the previous slide. To kind of help us get those numbers down and really focus on the students that are truly GT, we've incorporated some new assessments this year. One of those being the COGAT, which is our new screener at the third-grade level for identification. Most of the students, most of the, you know, the bright, talented students' needs can be met in the regular classroom through personalized learning and through the differentiation that the teachers do a fantastic job of doing. But we really want to see our population, you know, typically a GT population is around 3% to 5%, with the goal getting those numbers down to a more manageable number to really, really serve their needs. What we had going in the past with that larger population was more reflective of a talent development model, which as you can see is usually around 10% to 20%. So that shift to personalized learning is really going to help us adjust those kids that are really, you know, bright and talented, but maybe not necessarily gifted, which is why we want to get those numbers down to the 3% to 5%. And for example, I have on their district comparisons, Greendale's numbers right now are around 4% to 7%. So they have more truer numbers, but they also have a different type of model where they have a pull-out, as I was talking about earlier, that's a more, an older type of model.
And I think you remember, the, the reason we identify kids is to ensure growth, and if they truly test in that gifted range, it requires more than the personalized approach that we're using for the majority of our students. And if we're over-identifying, teachers struggle to design the actual programming needs that those students have, because we should be able to reach the majority of our kids in our tier-run curriculum and then have the at-risk on one end and the gifted on the, on the other. And so we're trying to work in a model that allows us to truly meet the needs of the students that have that, while honoring that everybody needs to have their learning personalized.
I have a question.
Yep.
So you want to get down to the 3% to 5% level? Is that from the 25 that it is now at the high school and middle school, or what number are you looking at moving down to the 3%?
From the 16, yeah.
But moving to your point, Tim, that's a really good question. Starting last year in third grade, we started using, when we identified students, we started using more of the stringent criteria that districts nationally are using to determine that gifted population. So we're not removing anybody who has that label. We're identifying in, in the more appropriate way for a gifted program for the future. So we're not taking labels away from anybody. We're, we're choosing to identify the way most districts do with a gift, truly gifted model. And in Franklin, it could be a little higher than 3% to 5%. We do have a very bright population of students, so that, that's a range, but we know 17% or 18%. It was two years ago, 22%, so it's come down already with our shift.
Here are some examples of the programming that takes place at all three levels. At the elementary level, we do see most frequently math acceleration, and this year we actually had, the first that I've ever experienced before with a kiddo was a double math acceleration. So that's really, truly a unique situation where we're addressing the needs of a student who, whose needs just can't be met at the regular grade level or in the classroom. We also have curriculum compacting, where we might do this with the clusters, where if they're meeting the needs or they're, we use a pre-assessment for a unit, and if they've compacted out or they've already shown mastery of the standards, the teacher can then extend or enrich the curriculum based on data. So it's all data-driven. At the middle school level, we have, again, several students, I want to say it's five, math students who are accelerated and go to the high school, and not only take an advanced, they're in honors geometry this year, but they also are taking a chemistry course this year. So that's an example of students at the middle school who are receiving programming to meet their needs. And at the high school level, students sort of follow their own, I hate to say the word "track," but an advanced track, all the way through youth options to complete college coursework. So those are just some, several examples that I could think of to show you. So overall, you know, the goal is to get our students college and career-ready, and I had the opportunity to work with one of the guidance counselors at the high school, Keith Decker, who was fantastic. I've worked with him over the past year and a half. And he found a past, a former student from Franklin, and she was willing to sit down and kind of give a short testimonial, testimonial about her great experience here with the gifted programming and how it's benefited her now. So I'd like to play that for you, because she'll say it much more eloquently than I will.
Hi, my name is Katie Press, and I am a Class of 2000 graduate of Franklin Public Schools. I'm here today to talk to you about my experience in the Gifted and Talented Program through Franklin Public Schools. I specifically, I wanted to focus on my high school experience and sort of how it, I've seen it kind of influence my life and my practice. I'm currently an academic advisor at UW-Waukesha, and I got there through UW Madison. I originally attended UW Madison and graduated with a secondary mathematics license, and then taught for two years at a boarding school in Boston, and then have now taken on academic advising role at UW-Waukesha, earning my, my graduate degree in higher education administration. So when I went to Madison, I think the, how I saw the GT program sort of reflected in, in my education there, was I saw a difference in, in sort of the critical thinking aspect of how, how I was able to engage in the curriculum at Madison in a much deeper way than I saw my peers engaging with the material. So I think the GT program really focused on looking at content and then analyzing it and synthesizing it in a way that isn't really present in the, in the traditional curriculum. Especially now in a day and age where we are so focused on testing and test preparation, we lose that element of critical thinking. And I see that even now in my current practice as an academic advisor. I see students who come in and just aren't really engaging in their, in their courses in that deeper way that I saw myself able to engage in the material back when I was in college. And I really attribute most of that to my experience in the GT program. I also see it just reflected in my own teaching practice and being able to be a very reflective practitioner. And I see that having kind of stemmed from my GT experience at Franklin High School in terms of looking at our work and reflecting on it and, and just being able to kind of translate it into, into my own teaching now. The last thing I kind of wanted to point out was like how, how we learned. I think in, in GT, we gained greater appreciation for the, the ways that, like multiple intelligences in how individuals have intelligences in many different ways. And there are ways to engage in material using those, using those different intelligences and being able to kind of harness, harness that ability and then apply it into your, into your life or your education. And so that's what I wanted to share with you today. Thanks.
She did a great job of explaining her point of view. So it was really interesting, I think, to hear her feedback and just see how it really helped her not only be prepared for college and really, you know, interacting at college, but not, and then take it to the next level with her teaching practice as well. So going back to the report, if there aren't any, you know, if there are any other questions I haven't answered, I'd be more than happy to do so now. I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and how, how have parents adjusted to the new programs?
I'm sorry.
How have, how have parents adjusted to the new definitions and how we're handling things? Has there been any feedback from parents then?
The, the only people that are seeing different are the newly identified, so the past practice, what the parents, they were experiencing, is similar. The biggest shift really comes around what was just for GT now. Educators are expected to provide for all students. So before, we used to say you have to differentiate for a student and a GT student so that their needs are met. Now you have to ensure that all kids are met, you know, in a personalized learning model. So that's, that's really the shift. So when we look at identifying, there are gifted kids that can't be met in the spectrum of just that differentiated or personalized learning. in the spectrum of just that differentiated or personalized learning. And those are the kids where she pointed out, the programs where you truly have to accelerate their learning, you have to move their high school track faster, and you have to make those shifts. So that's the population where, you know, we're working. So the parents don't really see much of a difference. And at the third grade level, we're just identifying based on the gifted criteria that screens out the students that needs can't be met in the differentiated or personalized environment that the teachers provide.
Thank you.
So in the video, she was probably referring to the gifted program that we had then when she was in high school, the pull-out classes and so forth. She was referring to, you know, learning about multiple intelligences and critical thinking. And I know we teach, you know, critical thinking now in all of our classes, but are kids, do they still learn about multiple intelligences? And are they self-aware, you know, the kids who are in that population? Do they have any, I don't know, because sometimes they're just different and it's harder for them to fit in? Or is there any social, emotional supports for, for those kids or not really in the current model?
Last year was a pilot year at the high school. We implemented a social, emotional group, if you will, for a select group of kids to kind of see how they would benefit from it. And the feedback was fantastic. We did a post and a pre, sorry, a pre and a post survey to kind of see what the kids gained from it. And they really had fabulous things to say, interacting with the kids that thought like them and that felt like them. And so this year, we also incorporated that at the middle school and at the elementary level. We piloted a social, emotional group at sixth grade in Pleasant View. So realizing that we have to address those needs as well. It's been, you know, small steps going forward, but we do realize that's a need that we need to incorporate. Thank you.
If we're finished with GT, we'll thank Jill and the ladies that joined her this evening. The facilitators, like I said, add that role to their additional classroom responsibilities. So we appreciate their voice around that area. And we will move on to the ESL program in Franklin. So I will let the ladies start. While they're preparing, they want me to draw your attention to the fabulous photos they posted from the work they do with the students that they support in the regular classroom.
Willkommen. Ich heiße Denise Ryan. Ich bin Lehrerin bei Southwood Glen in Ben Franklin. Guten Abend. Wie gesagt, wir sind sehr glücklich.
Hi, my name is Kim Haryun. I'm from Korea. I'm a teacher. My name is Kim Haryun. I'm from Korea. I'm 12 years old and in fifth grade. You just had the opportunity. You just had the opportunity to hear our greetings in German, Japanese, Korean. Oh, excuse me. Mom. Mom. Okay. I want, we wanted to give you a mini-language immersion experience to demonstrate what our newcomers experience when they arrive in an American classroom for the first time and try to understand a full day of English instruction.
This next slide is our ESL program delivery model. In Franklin, we make academic content and language understandable or comprehensible through content-based sheltered instruction, inclusionary support, and pull-out small group instruction. And I'm sure you're wondering, what do those fancy words mean, Denise? Content-based sheltered instruction. Lisa Gauker, our middle school and high school teacher, who is not able to be here tonight because she is ill, does this at the high school and the middle school. There is actually a separate class teaching academic content and academic skill tailored to students proficiency levels in English. At the elementary level, our students receive more inclusionary support. They're, and sometimes they receive pull-out small group instruction. And inclusionary support is where the ESL teacher is in the mainstream classroom, facilitating learning for the English language learners and sometimes co-teaching with the classroom teacher. In addition, pull-out small group instruction is also in the mainstream classroom or it could be in the ESL room. And the ESL teacher works with a small group of English language learners to reinforce content and practice language skills.
Okay. I'm very excited.
I would like to share with you, in Franklin, we have a wide variety of languages. We have over 28 different languages and cultures in our Franklin School District, which is really, really exciting. On the side, you'll see we have our top eight most populated, or most spoken languages in Franklin. So Arabic, Hmong, Spanish, Urdu, Vietnamese, Albanian, Punjabi, and Hindi. And tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce one of my students and her families who came with us to share a little bit of her writing. She just came here this school year and started learning English. So I will let her introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her.
My name is Haryun Kim. I'm from Korea. I am 12 years old. I am in fifth grade. I go to Rye Nud. I came to the USA in March 2012. There are three reasons why I like English class. The first reason I like English class is I can learn English. I like to study English because sometimes we play fun games. The second reason I like English class is I can help first graders. I like to help first graders because I can learn English. Sometimes I can learn English sometimes, or I teach English to them. The last reason I like English class is I understand when the teacher says something. I understand when the teacher says something because the teacher talks slowly. There are many different reasons I like English class.
Thank you very much.
This next slide is our photographs of two of my students from Southwood Glen. They are second graders. And at Southwood Glen in Ben Franklin, I have the opportunity to collaborate with classroom teachers kindergarten through sixth grade. And in second grade, the students at Southwood Glen are assigned a country of their heritage, and they learn about the country of their heritage. And they do a report about this country, both oral and written in the classroom. And this usually happens in December because it encompasses the theme of family tradition so that we can celebrate everybody, because not everyone celebrates Christmas, but everybody does celebrate something. And the first student is sharing information about Puerto Rico. And she brought in Puerto Rican cookies to share with the class. So we eat really well in December at Southwood Glen, really well. And the second student is from China. And she is showing her Chinese New Year's outfit that she wears for the Chinese New Year's celebration that she celebrates with her family. So in my job as the ESL teacher is to help them write their report and prepare their oral presentation.
Okay, this last slide, these are pictures from Pleasant View's Folk Fair, which we just held last Friday. And I had the privilege of coordinating that Folk Fair with the help of some of the staff members. This was really a great opportunity for our students to experience other cultures in a very real way. These are just some of the students who work tirelessly on their displays. The first slide, or the first picture shows the India group, two members from the India group. Mrs. Gill, Karen Gill, could not come this evening, she's sick. But with one of the students from that group. They had a fabulous display of delicious food, colorful jewelry, various Indian artifacts, and an extremely long line that never let up all night long for people eager to have their hands painted with Henna. The student in the middle, delightful student, was proud to share her Lebanese heritage and even offered to teach passersby Arabic, Assalamualaikum. The Russian and Filipino students and another student in the last picture were happily dressed in traditional clothing and proudly shared their traditional food. As educators, we, I think we can all agree that we feel it's part of our role is to help our children succeed in a global world. And as the work environment continues to change and becomes more global, we feel that experiences like this just really help expand their global awareness. And we really feel very, very privileged, I think, all of us, to work with these students. They, we view them as a gift. They enhance, I think, the lives of all of the children that they, that they're, you know, when they're part of our community. And sometimes I wonder who teaches who more. So I feel very privileged to be working with these children and very grateful, this is my first year at Franklin, to have been part of this experience. So these were the areas that we covered in our reports. We had just a few questions before we came tonight that we addressed. But if anybody has any other questions, we'll be happy to answer them now.
This might seem like a silly question, but do you, do you, as ESL teachers, have to have knowledge of every single one of those 28 languages or no?
Excellent question.
ESL is a degree in linguistics, and it's a degree in how languages work. So when we went to school, we were studying various parts of different languages. And also, all of us have some level of foreign language. I have a German teaching degree. Bridgette went to Japan. She has a bilingual Spanish license. So we know how to make language comprehensible. No matter what their language is, we can get them to understand us, even if we don't speak their language.
And that is also part of our ongoing, you know, in the past, our ongoing certification and training is to continually learn and enhance our skills in how to make language comprehensible.
So thank you to all our coordinators that came tonight and the teachers. You can see they're proud of what they do, and they should be, because they do fabulous work to assist us in meeting the needs of all of our students. So thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thanks.
Our next item is Item D, the Human Resources Report. Dr. Miller?
Actually, Ms. Larson is prepared to.
I am, yes, indeed. Dr. Miller and I bring two policies before you tonight. One for elimination, that is Policy 4130, smoking and tobacco use. We are eliminating that policy because it, we are adding it to, we are adding language to Policy 4131, alcohol and a drug-free workplace. That policy references the tobacco use on our, here at school. It is also referenced in the employee handbook that we currently have in place. The reason that we feel that we need to add this to the policy, Policy 4131, is there is, because of the Wisconsin State Statutes, Chapter 120, it pertains to the laws related to school governance. And it is the specific duty of the school board to prohibit these things on their property, their workplace.
I guess, I didn't realize it was being, it's in part of the handbook, you said?
Yes.
And what is it, you didn't provide, you know, what it says about in the handbook?
Do you? The same text that I put in the policy is in the handbook. There's perhaps a bit more in terms of what you would find in the rules. You'll see that the rules here have been taken out of the policy. So you're left with policy language. And that policy language mirrors what's in the handbook. It's the same language.
So the rule violation stuff is not in the handbook then?
It is in the handbook.
Oh, it is in the handbook.
It's no longer an administrative rule, it's part of your policy.
And when you and I met and we talked about this, we, you had shown me where the wording aligns with the handbook. The new wording that you're putting into the policy aligns with what's in the employee handbook, correct?
That is correct.
I have a question. I noticed that the, the smoking, tobacco policy applied not just to staff members, but also to students and guests of the school. I didn't really see that addressed in the, in the drug, alcohol, and tobacco-free workplace policy. So I don't know, do we have that covered somewhere else?
Yeah, that's covered in Policy 3632.
It is?
Yes.
And we just reviewed that in November of 2011. Tim might remember that.
Yes.
I don't remember it, but I believe you.
It was actually November 9th. Do you remember that date?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's really a consolidation and an alignment with the handbook. Just cleaning things up.
Do I hear a motion to eliminate Policy 4130, smoking, tobacco use prohibited?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second? Second? Second by Mrs. Klein, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of eliminating Policy 4130, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. And then, do I hear a motion to accept Policy 4131 as the revised Policy 4131? Motion by Mr. Trailer?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you. Item E, Treasures Report. Mrs. Klein?
Thank you. The general fund balance for March is $18,633,099. That service fund balance is $1,792,246. And prior to April 24th, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of $4 million for the March 31st and April 15th payrolls and accounts payable.
Thank you. And Item 10, Board Meeting Debriefing. Does anyone have any comments for tonight?
I just wanted to say that I thought we had very good dialogue tonight when we were discussing the post-employment benefits. I, I felt like everybody was able to speak what was on their mind. And I really appreciated it after the vote when Tim and Janet kind of explained what your thought process was, because otherwise I wouldn't have had any understanding. And it's, it's good to know, you know, we weren't as far away as we, as we thought we might have been from, from what we're trying to achieve. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
I thought it was great having the ELL, students and families here. That's just very nice. It's always nice to have students, but the families too. That was very nice.
I guess I'd like to, I know we had the process of submitting questions on, on the issue of the post-employment benefits and Jim responding back. How did you guys feel about how that process worked? If that was really how that, I guess I wasn't always comfortable submitting questions and then as opposed to maybe having those questions discussed among all of us openly. I guess I'm wondering what your thoughts were on that.
I think.
Do you understand my point that?
I think it can be used as a good tool to get, get some background, you know, laid down and before we get to a full board like this where you can get a little bit of, of understanding where everyone's coming, not really understanding where everyone's coming from. That's for a board discussion. But I think, I can, I think it can be used appropriately. You know, I don't think that should be the only feedback you get, but at least that can turn, you know, an hour and a half meeting instead of having a four-hour meeting, because you can, you can get some of that stuff out in advance and get some answers. Plus, he may need some time, whomever will need time to get back to you.
I, yeah, I agree. I think it was, we were able to do the questions and answers in a more timely way versus sitting at a meeting and going through that many questions. And Tim's right, it's not our only way of doing things, but I think it worked in this case.
Plus, it is, it's very complex. And, you know, I'm the person, I need some time to kind of digest that. And, and for me to be able to read it and then think about it a little bit instead of just hearing it one time was helpful.
And it's a good point of reference, too. You're able to go back and check that and say, oh, did someone ask this? Or did I think of this? Or did I read this correctly? I think it's, I think it's a good point of reference.
I think if the questions that are posed when answered are shared, then that's even more beneficial, you know? So I think you need to have that other element to make sure that everyone knows. Because they may not think of something somebody else thought. to, because they may not think of something somebody else thought of.
I just want to follow up that, but, because you made, I think you made a good point, though, that there were a lot of questions. And I guess, why were there a lot of questions? Maybe there should have been better information upfront, I guess. And then ultimately, that's why we're doing the committee, because there wasn't really adequate information upfront, just something to.
It's just a big area. To know, to know where this is going to ebb and flow to, I think, was, it was good to just get a starting point and then figure out how this whole thing was gonna, was gonna work out.
Yeah, we stated upfront when we provided it that we weren't doing a comprehensive study and writing everything that everyone might think of in the future. That's why we wanted to go the question route so that the things you really want to know about, we're going to cover, as well as other things along the way so that you get the information that you're looking for instead of getting a fifty-page booklet that you just look at and say, I don't have time to read that, but I wish we could get to just what I want to know. So that's why we went the question route. I think it worked out well that way, that we were able to target the things that you were looking for rather than, you know, going on for a while about things we might be thinking about.
I appreciate the feedback. Anything else? Thank you. And future agenda items, we have the District Administrator Evaluation on April tenth, the Assessment Report, April twenty-fourth, Human Resources Report on April twenty-fourth, and then the Oath of Office and Election of Board Officers on April twenty-fourth.
Yeah, we will also on April tenth, provide a update on negotiations with the FBI, a closed session.
Okay.
And was it the tenth, Steve, that you said the architects would be here with?
Right.
Detailed information as well?
Did we have the groundbreaking set up?
Not yet, no. We're just waiting here when the architects are able to do it because they're all over the place. And we had to come up with the school board.
Are you still thinking April, though? Is that the?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it is in April? Okay.
Right now would be the snow breaking.
Snow breaking?
Well, we'll, we'll be able to clear some stuff up and get to some dirt, but, and we're, we're probably looking at, I think everybody has presented an initial response about a four o'clock, four o'clock, four-thirty timeframe. If that would be with everybody's approval, we can, before I know it, you, you said you had some flexibility in there. In some cases, a bit is worth, but you know, when we get the date nailed up.
The sooner, the better in order.
Yeah.
I'll take that. Thank you. And do we hear a motion to adjourn?
I like that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mr. Trailer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. We adjourned at seven fifty-three. Thank you.